Sorry about that.
That was funny.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Monday, January 10th, 2022 school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Arndt.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Walker.
Here.
Inspector Roche.
Here.
Inspector Weber.
Here.
Inspector Lollaberty.
Here.
Chair Diaz.
Here.
That's seven present at 6:00.
Great. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Happy New Year. First up is the approval of our meeting agenda and minutes, and I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight as well as the meeting minutes from our December 13th, 2021 Committee of the Whole and Regular Business Meetings.
So moved.
Great, thanks.
Second.
Thanks, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So the next order of business for our meeting is to select our officers. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Chair for a term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2022, tonight, to the first business meeting in January 2023.
I'd like to nominate Linda Diaz as Chair position.
Thank you for that. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? And last call for the nominations of Chair. So as the only candidate nominated for the Office of Chair, I hereby declare me, Linda Diaz, elected by acclamation for a term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2022 to the first business meeting in January 2023. Yay me.
There you go.
All right. Nominations are now in order for Vice Chair for a term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2022 to the first business meeting in January 2023.
I nominate John Roche.
Great, John Roche is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? And last call for the other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair. And as the only candidate nominated for the Office of Vice Chair, I hereby declare John Roche elected by acclamation for a term commencing on the first business meeting tonight in January 2022 to the first business meeting in January 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Nominations are now in order for Board Clerk for a term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2022 to the first business meeting in January 2023.
I nominate Nikki Lollaberty for that position.
Thanks, Nikki Lollaberty is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? And last call for the nominations for the Office of Clerk. Great. Nikki Lollaberty is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Clerk, and I hereby declare her elected by the acclamation for a term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2022 to the first business meeting in January 2023.
I accept.
Great. We might not have let you not accept.
Well, I didn't know. I just, no.
But we thank you.
It's always a minefield.
Right, that's when we tackle you. So nominations are now in order for Treasurer for a term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2022 to the first business meeting in January 2023. I nominate Chris Walker. Chris Walker is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the Officer of Treasurer? Are there any other office nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Last call for other nominations for the Office of Treasurer. Great. Chris Walker is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Treasurer. I hereby declare him elected by acclamation for a term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2022 to the first business meeting in January 2023.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we'll move into the report section of the agenda, and we did have public listening today, and there were no public listening reports today came, and Dr. Webb is here to give us some district highlights.
Good evening. We have a number of highlights in just kind of our first week back off of the holiday break, and just a number of good news updates tonight. So COVID is never a great news update, but we want to just continue to remind everyone in our community some of what we're doing, but continuing to ask for your support as we follow the Minnesota Department of Health guidance. So for quarantines, we'll continue to follow their guidance, which actually may change this week from 10 days to five days. Face coverings at every building, we have that in place for ages two plus, all staff, all students two and older. We always want to remind people, if you're not feeling well, stay home, students, staff, everyone. And we have an incredible person that's been point as our COVID coordinator for nearly two years. It's one of our lead nurses, Shawnee Krueger, and we still are asking everyone to report their positives to skrueger@sspps.org. Just one other data point. Every Friday, we report out, and we try to be as transparent as possible, and report out all of our student positives and staff positive number totals every Friday afternoon. It's right on our website if you ever want to track and follow that information. Superintendent's search. So the posting closes for the next superintendent, January 17th. So if you have been in conversation with someone that's got their application started, make sure they're submitting by January 17th, and the Minnesota School Board Association is receiving all of those applications, and they're really partnering with the board in the search process. The website about more information you ever care to know about the superintendent's search is right on our website at that address. Who knew, but only in COVID, would there be a milk carton shortage? So there's not a milk shortage, plenty of milk, and you can get it in like gallon or five gallon bags if you really want it, but there's a milk carton shortage. So, and this isn't just South St. Paul, this is like across the country. So we've had to start allocating and prioritizing milk here in the district. So all of our elementary schools will continue to get all of their regularly allocated milk. Our secondary students will be offered milk with cereal and breakfast, and then secondary students at lunchtime will be offered a bottle of water. So I just wanted to be really palms up, and it's a change for a number of families, but just know, like, this is the year where we've had to run to Cub and buy 50 bottles of ketchup just for lunch because it didn't show up on the truck, or syrup, or you name the product this year. Our food service is always amazing, but in a pandemic, they have been extra amazing and deserve a shout out even though there's a milk carton shortage. And just, I had a little flashback to about second grade when I opened up the wrong side of the milk carton. I don't know if you ever did that growing up, but it's always a failed attempt. So just know that's a milk carton shortage going on. Hats off to the city, working with a lot of our church leaders in town to have an inaugural South St. Paul commemoration of Martin Luther King Jr. So that's going to happen at Luther Memorial Church on Monday, January 17th at 9:00 a.m. If you'd like to RSVP, dub.griffith@southstpaul.org. You can email her. It's just fine if you want to show up and join in as well. That's again, this coming Monday, a week from today, will be a celebration of Martin Luther King Jr. We have our Winter One-X taking place on January 21st and January 22nd, 7:00 p.m. and 2:00 p.m. respectively. We have, here's one, "The Strange Case of Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde," and many other strange tales. These are student-written and directed plays. So a series of them. If you're interested in our One-X, those are the two dates to take a look at. Again, a shout out to our AAA award recipients, Macy and Jacob, a shout out to each of them, just great pictures of the kids. And chemistry, you know, they always have the chemical reactions in chemistry class. So here's 11th and 12th graders doing their chemical reactions, testing metal reactions with water and acid. You just forget about all the cool stuff that happens in classrooms around the district. Here's Biz Town sixth graders that really have to create their own town, their own businesses. They elect a mayor for the day and all the rest. So a lot of really good things happening with sixth graders. They have to do resumes and all the rest, but it's a lot of really good job-related forecasting and foreshadowing for kids in their future. You can walk into a sixth grade class just studying Newton's First Law of Motion, just with cups, and quickly pulling out those cards for cups to demonstrate inertia of the cups. So trying to make learning engaging and fun and interactive. Here's Lincoln Center fifth graders demonstrating all about equations and the focus, communication, cooperation of learning. So it's continuing to make learning visible and so people can give feedback and comment and grow and make learning a process, not just a product. Here's one of my phases, favorites. It's Oreo phases of the moon. So how cool is that, that you just take some simple Oreos and say, hey, let's just do a moon unit? And they lay it out, can you create this phase of the moon? So I know that if it passed my mouth, it'd be one of those eclipses where it just disappeared, but they had a great time. And how jazzed are the kids get when you actually use something that they recognize?
Oh, that's funny.
Cards for kids, it's, we have the posters up, "Be the Eye in Kind." Here's a whole class that was being the Eye in Kind, making cards for hospitalized kids. So hats off to the Capoja Student Council for doing that. We have snack math, our second graders using snacks as place values in math. Again, just trying to make learning engaging and fun. Finally, here's a couple of upcoming calendar events. We have no school on Martin Luther King Day on the 17th, but again, you are invited if you want to join in our celebration. And then January 28th and 31st, there's no school for students as we have some PD and staff development. So back to you.
Great. Thank you. So at our Committee of the Whole meeting earlier tonight, the school board reviewed and discussed a number of our organizational items, like our meeting schedule and committee assignments, our liaison committees that we work with. The approval of these annual organizational items will fall under our consent agenda item, which also includes financial claims, bills payable, and then our staffing report. So do I have a motion for the approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thanks, John. Any discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. So moving on to the policy section of our agenda. As a point of reference, school district policy number 208 requires policies under review be placed on two consecutive school board meeting agendas for review, for review and comment by board members, staff, community members, and on the third and subsequent meeting, the policies will go before the school board for approval. Policy also states that in the case of an emergency, a new or modified policy may be adopted by a majority vote of a quorum of the school board. With the OSHA Emergency Temporary Standards, ETS, compliance, we have a COVID-19 vaccination, testing, quarantine, and face covering policy before us for review and approval. And this policy incorporates our current COVID-19 face covering policy number 808 and our current quarantine policy number 809. Do I have a motion? Anybody?
So moved.
Okay, thanks, Nikki. And second?
Second.
Thanks, Wendy. And Nikki, our HR representative, could you provide some background information on these policies for us?
Thank you for hearing this agenda item tonight. This agenda item recommends incorporating the substance of current policy 808, which is the face covering mandate, the current policy 809, which is our COVID quarantine policy, and the emergency temporary standard adopted and required by the Minnesota OSHA, incorporating it all into one comprehensive policy. This incorporation does not change any of the substance of the face covering or the quarantine policies. It just brings them forward and puts them in the same policy as the emergency temporary standard requirements. One important note is that Section 5 is only in effect when the federal and state mandate is in place. I'm happy to answer any question that the board members may have.
We did talk a little bit about this today during our Committee of the Whole meeting. Any questions from the board?
So when are you going to be starting to implement the parts of this policy?
So tonight is the first step towards implementing the policy. So the first date in the emergency temporary standard is today, January 10th, we're supposed to have a school board policy in place, or a policy in place. The second mandate is the February 9th date, which is when the testing mandate needs to be in place. And so between now and that February 9th date, we'll be collecting information from our employees to find out if they are vaccinated, because if they're not vaccinated, then the emergency temporary standard requires them to do weekly testing. And so we'll be putting that policy in place and also communicating both the policy and the procedures to our employees. Thank you for the question.
Dr. Webb?
And just a couple reminders for the community. So we have a face mask. We're one of, not one of the few districts, but there aren't a lot of districts that have a K-12 and a really two-years-and-up face mask policy for everyone on campus. So teachers, cooks, custodians, all of our kids, so all staff and students, district-wide. And we have ever since the summer, when COVID really made its return. So we're not recommending any changes to that. So that part of the policy, we're going to continue to roll this into one larger policy. We keep all of that. So we want to also make sure that we keep our quarantining going. This policy will align with the Minnesota Department of Health on Wednesday if they change from 10 days down to five. So that's a reminder in this policy. And then just again, as, and I'll just shout out our new HR director, Nikki Tishir, has done just a great job in her first month here and just hit the ground running, has brought all of these together to take the new, the ETS to say, now that we have to either have mandatory testing or show your vaccination status, couldn't we simplify it for employees so they have a number of ways that they can share their status with us? And if they can't, can we make it easy to do testing and regular testing to make sure that everyone stays safe? So done an outstanding job just bringing all of that together in one policy. All right.
Any other comments, questions?
Nikki, I just want to express appreciation for pulling this together. I think you found some hesitancy from the board as a whole, just because we're nervous, you know, and we're nervous about any of these things, as any of these policy decisions through any of this pandemic has been really, really challenging. And so I think we all wrestled with it a little bit as we got ready over this last weekend and such to kind of get ready, but also recognize that none of us sitting up here are medical experts. And so we really need that outside guidance to lean on. And we all kind of debated about when we did or didn't agree with some of that outside guidance, but I think, you know, we really, we need that right now because so much of this pandemic is outside of our expertise. So we're all struggling with it, and I know we heard from family and staff who continued to as well, and we're just trying to do the best for the district. So I appreciate your work on it. This is hard, and I think it's hard for all of us to make that decision, but thank you.
Could we also share?
Go ahead, Nikki.
Are there exemptions to when you don't have to wear a mask? And I don't know if you know the answer to that or not, but...
I do. So there are some exemptions, and the exemptions have stayed the same from our original policy, which is things like eating impossibilities. That's the term that I like to use, when you're eating, when you're drinking, when you're swimming. I mean, that was one of the exemptions that were used, you don't need to wear a mask. But really, those impossibility components of things are the exemptions.
What about sports or music?
Music is one of the exemptions that were, was in the original policy, and so that's the singing and the while performing or acting. And then I don't recall if the policy actually speaks to gym per se, so I'm going to go over there. It does.
Yeah, so when kids are physically active and exerting themselves, you don't have to wear the mask again. You know, no kids are wearing masks at recess in elementary school, some of those things because they're outside. And those are the big picture. I was going to bring up another topic, but I'll wait. Any other questions about masking?
Oh, and I just wonder if, like, you know, if little kids like are coming into the gym, you know, for activities, should they be required to be wearing a mask? Like element, not kids that are necessarily, you know, performing or playing.
Yeah, so if you're not exerting yourself, like if you're like just sitting on the sidelines or stuff, yeah, it's just...
They should?
I still think it's not, the guidance really still points to that you're physically active.
Okay.
Because if you go to one of our wrestling events, the wrestlers aren't wearing the mask, but the people in the stands are. So if you're sitting around just watching, yeah, wear a mask.
Okay.
We always think it's better safe than sorry.
Thank you.
Could I have you talk just for a minute about the Supreme Court and how that can play too?
Of course. So on Friday, the U.S. Supreme Court heard whether the emergency temporary standard would be stayed or whether it would remain valid, and they heard it on Friday. They did not rule from the bench, and that was one thing that we put in the board packet might happen. We do anticipate some type of a ruling prior to February 9th. That's what the legal pundits are saying at least, but as soon as that happens, what happens to that Section 5 of the policy then? Is it, if for some reason, the U.S. Supreme Court stays it, then that part of the policy just becomes void and non, not legally active, if that makes sense? But we won't need to come back and visit the policy because that's actually rebuilt right into the policy itself. And so as long as the emergency temporary standard is valid, that Section 5 is in place. But if at some point it's not valid, it's not validated or held invalid, it would, that Section 5 would just be moot.
Okay. Great. Any other thoughts? Thanks, Nikki, for presenting. Any discussion, boards members, board members? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
So moving on to the business items section of our meeting, we have five business items on our agenda tonight. The first one is for the approval of the South St. Paul Secondary's new course proposals for the 2022-23 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Schmidt, would you please share some background information on this new course proposal?
Yes, good evening, Chair Diaz, board members, and Superintendent Webb. Thank you. I am Director of Learning, Chad Schmidt, and here on behalf of High School Principal Chuck O'Chucky to share this new tri-district Career and Professional Studies course that we're proposing, Computer Science and Information Technologies. This would join the three other tri-district CAPS courses that we already offer in healthcare, business and entrepreneurship, and transportation and skilled trades. Students in this course would learn professional skills and technical knowledge in things like software engineering, web development, operating systems, network technologies, and information systems. Students would have the opportunity to take the Advanced Placement Statistics course and Advanced Placement Computer Science course as enrollees in this. And one of the things that we're super excited about is this is hands-on learning in this area of a very dynamic field, computer science and information technology system. So it broadens out the career and college pathways that we already offer and hopefully is part of an interest area for many students. And so all students in, sorry, juniors and seniors at Two Rivers High School in District 197, Simley High School in District 199, and South St. Paul High School would be eligible to apply for this. And so with your potential approval tonight, it would go in the South St. Paul High School Registration Guide, and registration would start, starts up in early February. So information going out through the principal newsletters around that. Are there any questions?
Yeah, any discussion, board members?
Maybe just a comment, just a, you know, thanks, Chad's here just, you know, infrequently. So just the incredible work that happens behind the scenes, collaborating to find a shared time with three school districts for an hour slot is amazing, and just the ability to keep growing career pathways for our kids, I think, is amazing. So a lot of incredible opportunities happening out of our CNI office, our Office of Learning. So thank you.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
So our next two items up are for approval regarding the sale of the Jefferson site property. The first item is for the board to approve the termination of terms and condition agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thanks. Brady will share some background information.
Good evening. Brady Hoffman, Director of Finance. As you're aware, back in November, the school board did approve the purchase agreement to sell the Jefferson property to the city of South St. Paul. This is just working through the process to get to the closing, so working through some of the title documents and getting to that clean title point. There's a couple pieces of agreements that are in place for this first one since 1994. So this is a termination agreement on some additional terms and conditions that were in place when the church owned the adjacent property. So this was a right of use for a driveway across a portion of the district property. The church no longer owns that property. So this is a formality of terminating that agreement so that as we move forward and sell this to the city, this land is clear, the title is clean for the city of South St. Paul. So just a standard agreement that's agreed to already by the church, so it's just a matter of school board taking action as well, so we can continue with the closing process with the city.
Great, thanks, Brady. Board members, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. The next item is for the approval of the termination of license agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, John.
Second.
Thanks. And then Brady, you're going to share some more information about this?
Yep, so this license agreement is similar to that, the previous item we took action on. So this was with the church as well, and this was related to, from 1985, giving the church access to use the school's playground and open space. So it was just the ability for them to come and use the land and the space on their time, but because they no longer own the property, once again, it's not really relevant at this point as part of cleaning up the title as, you know, for the closing to sell the land to the city.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is for the approval of the Acceptance of Gifts Resolution. Lisa, could you read that resolution?
Be it resolved that the school board of South St. Paul Public Schools Special School District 6 accept the following donations as indicated in the detailed background. $570 donated to Capoja Education Center from Stephen and Janel Lawrence, and the purpose is for the play. And then $1,000 donation to the South St. Paul Theater Program from Adam Maurer, and that is to be used as needed. And a $900 donation from the, to the Nutrition Services Department from Globe Publishing to help those in need with their unpaid lunch balances.
Great.
Great.
Yeah, very generous. Do I have a motion to move this resolution for approval?
So moved.
Ms. Wendy?
Second.
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion?
Just another shout out to the Lawrence's, the Maurer's, Globe Publishing. So we are always open for donations for the district. So just a shout out for those three, $500 makes a difference for an elementary school. So thank you, and just to under-recognize them tonight.
Thank you.
I will, I second those comments and just thank them for their generosity. It's very appreciated.
So generous. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
Great, that motion carries. So our last business item tonight is for the approval of the resolution relating to the delegation of clerk and treasurer duties to the finance director for day-to-day business. Will you please read that resolution, Lisa?
Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B dot 414 subdivision 1 empowers the school board to combine the duties of the offices of clerk and treasurer of the school board in one person in the finance office of the school district. Therefore, be it resolved that the finance director of South St. Paul Public Schools is designated by the school board of Special School District 6 to perform the duties of the clerk and treasurer of the district.
Oh, great. Do I have a motion to move that resolution for approval?
So moved.
Thanks Nikki. Second. Thank you. Dave, do you have some background information on that?
So this is just our standard procedure that allows us to continue to keep the business operations running for our school district and just transfers, I don't want to, power is not the right word, just signature more than anything else and approval in our office.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? And then Lisa, will you call that role for us, please?
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
That motion carries. Thanks, so that is it for our business items. We can move on to our board member reports on any informational items that we have. So we'll start down on my right. Inspector Arndt, do you have anything tonight?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to shout out to the South St. Paul Packer basketball team, which I've seen play twice in the last week. And they're well worth the admission to go and watch how hard they work, how disciplined they are, and what a great job they do as a team. It's well worth everybody's time and effort to go and check them out, thanks.
Great, thanks.
I don't have anything at this time.
I'll just do a quick, it's going to sound self-serving, but I just want to congratulate the board members that have taken on positions, whether they be in the executive committee or in the other committees or even as a liaison to the other groups. It's a big part of being a board member, and it does take up a lot of time. So I just want to thank everyone that is taking on those roles and wish them well through the next year.
Thank you. Thanks for your service as well. Nikki?
I thought you were going down the... No, I don't think I really do.
All right, thanks. Inspector Roche?
I just want to wish everyone well as we've come back to the new year for the school year. Want to remind everyone to keep everyone as healthy and safe as well so we can continue school in person. And also just want to express appreciation. I think there's not an administrator or a teacher who has not kind of stepped up and shown great leadership and done some extra subbing this week. And I know that that is straining and hard, but I appreciate you keeping kind of the train going and keeping our decisions as kids first. So thank you.
Thank you. Wendy?
First, I want to put out another shout out. I know Dr. Webb mentioned it too, about our theater with our upcoming one-act play series coming up towards the 21st and 22nd of January. It's a lot of fun to go see those kids doing, doing their job, so keep that in mind, and tickets will be on sale very soon. And also, I'm going to put a shout out to our girls hockey team, who has been rated again in the St. Paul Pioneer Press as being in the top 20 teams in the state of Minnesota. So thank you and congratulations to the girls hockey team. And also too, I wanted to put out a shout, shout out to our, our board members who are taking the leadership positions. Chair Diaz, Vice Chair Roche, Clerk Lallaberty, and Treasurer Walker. Thank you for doing that and guiding our district and our board along as we, as we get through this year. And just one other reminder to the seniors at the secondary building, that in the next month, starting here in February, the Educational Foundation will be handing out the information to make applications for the scholarships that they will be giving out in the spring. So keep that in mind, and when you get that information, please fill it out and, you know, get it submitted to the foundation as soon as you can. So like as of last year, we gave out about $440,000. I don't have an exact number to hand, to give out right now today for scholarships, but I know we are in the process right now at the foundation of getting everything ready to go for that. So something to look forward to. And also want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. And there aren't enough words I could even say to our, all of our staff members for what they're, they're caring and their passion for our students and what they're doing. And, and like everyone feels, stay safe, keep safe. And, and we're just so honored and proud to be part of, of this district, so thank you.
Thank you so much. So that's it for our agenda tonight, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Ooh, is there a second?
Second.
Fantastic. Any discussion? That motion carries, so the meeting is adjourned at 6:00. I can't see that far.